Yes.
Yeah, we're just gonna say to Herman, I plan on coming to your church.
Feel free.
Yes, I look forward to it. Yeah, I would have been there Sunday, but I also had some car problems.
Oh, sorry to hear that. Did you get a take care of?
It's good now, though.
Well, thank you so much for joining us today. The three of you are candidates for position four on the Portland School Board. And I thought we'd just start off by having each of you give just a brief introduction about who you are, why you're running, what your priorities are, et cetera. And I'm just going to note for anyone who's watching, who will watch this recording once we post it, that Margot Logan is listed as being Cheryl, but it's Margot.
Yeah, computer problems this morning. So I'm at a friend's house. If you hear a dog bark, it's yeah, so we'll try to keep quiet.
Oh, yeah, my neighbors are doing construction. I'm sorry if any of you hear that as well.
Okay, no worries. Why don't we start off and go in alphabetical order? So Herman, would you mind going first and starting us off?
Absolutely. We're going in alphabetical order and I'm first? How is that even possible with Brooklyn?
Well, I'm the guy going last names.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. All right, that's good. Herman Green, that's spelled H E R M A N, last name Green, G R E E N E. Tell you a little bit about myself. I've been, let's see, I've got an amazing wife. Her name is Nike. We've been married for almost about 27 years right now. We have four amazing, amazing children. My eldest is 26, 27, somewhere around there, and she's a teacher at Roosevelt. My middle one is 23, she'll be 24. I got a 22, I got an 18, that'll be 19. I'll try to fast forward through all that. But I've been working and serving in this community for well over 20 years now, doing prison ministry, immunity work, community redevelopment work. I've volunteered at Roosevelt, at George, at Vernon, John Ball when it was John Ball before it turned that, then it went to Rosa Parks. I just, I love this community. I love what I do, and I'm excited to be here and talk about what we're doing, because I believe we're all here because we love the kids, so.
Great, thank you. Margot, do you want to go next?
Okay, yeah, I'm Margot Logan, and running for the board. My whole career has been kind of focused on protecting children, so, and working with children. Group care, I did group care for six years with 16 to 18-year-olds. I was a Child Protective Services investigator for 10 years, four years full-time. I subbed in the public schools for seven years, had a lot of eyewitnessing from that perspective. I taught in the community, recognizing and reporting child abuse for 10 years. I, you know, my whole issue is about the protection of children, and I feel like that there's some big concerns in the public schools in general. And I can, I can speak to that. The last 14 years, I've been an analyst, expert witness in civil lawsuits and administrative hearings, and again, mostly focused on children. Some have to do with regulation of businesses. And, and I'm, I was raised in the military, so I'm the daughter of a US Army intelligence officer, who was a photo interpreter, who worked with CIA for six years, five years. And so I grew up in the military schools, and I have seen the difference between that. In the military schools, there was total integration. There was no racism. And often, for anybody raised in the military, when they go into the civilian schools, the military schools have been, been the best. So, that's, that's brief.
Great, thank you. And Brooklyn?
I'm Brooklyn Sherman. I use male pronouns. I'm running for school board, because, you know, again, I'm really passionate about improving our schools. I'm a recent Jefferson graduate. My brother will be going to Roosevelt next year. His name's Berkeley Sherman. He's doubly gifted. He's on sped and tag. And I was in sped myself when I was in PPS. And I'm, again, just really concerned, especially with how sped children make up around 20% of our district. I really want to make sure that they're treated fairly, especially with, you know, how budgets are being handled currently, since we will be getting cutbacks in state funding. And we are getting increases luckily in federal funding. That's sadly only focused towards COVID.
Great, thank you. So each of you sort of hinted at some of this, but I guess I'm interested in finding out what specifically just spurred you all to run now for this position? Was there a certain episode or a certain priority that you have that is why you've decided to throw your hat in the ring? And I guess let's start off, let's switch it up, and Margot, if you could go first and answer that question.
Oh, yeah, thank you very much. I ran last year for state representative against Tina Kotek. And when I was subbing in the schools the last couple of years, we had a training that told us, and we were directed, that if we suspected sex abuse from a school personnel, that we were not to call the police, we were not to call CPS. Instead, we were to report to HR legal counsel. And then, in big red letters at the bottom of the training screen, it said, "Under no circumstances are you to notify the parent or legal guardian."
And I'm sorry.
So I was trying to figure out, we were directed not to notify the parent or the legal guardian.
Right, and I'm sorry, where and when?
So I went to Tina Kotek because she was my state representative. And I got a little bit of information from her assistant at the time. And, and there was some change in the law that came through the teachers' union. But I couldn't find out, well, who put together this training? And so for six years, off and on, I tried to meet with Tina Kotek, and she wouldn't meet with me, and she was my representative. And so when her, when that position became open last year, I thought, okay, you know, maybe I'll give this a shot, just to try to get out there. But I was kind of pretty much on a media blackout in Portland, except for KBOO. They interviewed me. So, so that happened and that passed. And then this year, when I found out there was some special election, and it was like, oh, the board, school board. You know, that's another way that if I was on the school board, I could help with that completely.
And I'm sorry, I missed the part about, so where was this training? Who was conducting it?
I was working in a number of different school districts, Reynolds and Multnomah County School District, and so bear a variety of different schools. And, but I think it's a statewide training. But I, at the point that I asked that question, who put together the training, it seemed like the walls went up. And so I could never find out who did that training and why it was put together like that. Because it was in violation of law, and I know that because I was a CPS investigator. I'm teaching it for 10 years in the community, and I couldn't pass the test until I marked to report to HR legal counsel, so.
Let's see, and so it's not necessarily specifically about the Portland School District, but rather about your interest in this issue as a whole?
Well, I imagine it's the whole school district, of all those different school districts, because there's a commonality here of how, you know, the, the school boards work and they interface, and they, they have the same probably training, and a lot of it now is like online. So, and then in 2018, I went to Portland Public Schools and up into Vancouver, just to kind of try to get a read on, okay, I want to see the training today. And I got a big reaction, you know, it was like, me just showing up and asking a simple, making a simple records request for just the training, which I knew was no more than probably 15 or 20 pages. And I got big reactions, not only Portland Public Schools, but Vancouver, from their attorney, she came out. It was like, you know, I was like, I'm just asking for public records. And I know, I think, is it Therese, or maybe it was you, Helen, somebody there, you're really focused on getting public records and helping. I forget what that was, maybe it was.
Or going in as a whole, and Therese has written numerous.
Yeah, reading your profile, yeah, yeah, so good on that. Yeah, keep doing that.
Great, thank you. Brooklyn, how about you in terms of why you're deciding to run now for Portland School Board? I guess what are, what kind of tip the scales for you?
I've always been interested in politics. I even worked for Teresa Rayford for her mayor bid in 2020. And, and that was a great experience. I enjoyed working alongside Teresa Rayford. But what really inspired me was my friend Kalen Parsons, who's also a huge political advocate. And he was telling me that, you know, he fears that there's not enough young representation on the school board, especially because this is a privilege. This is a job you're doing for free. You know, you're volunteering 40-plus hours a week to do this, and a lot of young people can't do that. So you don't see representation of recent PPS graduates in the system, who can tell you and show what happens to a child after PPS. And I'm running to be that representation, to tell those stories, and to help kids understand what will happen to them when they're done with high school and done with the PPS system. And I got inspired mostly by my friend Kalen Parsons, who's become my campaign manager now.
Okay. And how would you do that as a board member?
I would tell the kids about what happens to them after they're done with high school. And I also have plenty of friends who are still in high school, who are seniors and juniors. And I have tons of friends who are out of high school, who are now in college, here in the States and abroad, and know what, and they can talk about what happens, the experience, especially right now, since a lot of colleges are going under. I had a friend who went to Mills. She tried really hard. She studied a lot to get to Mills. But now the school's falling apart. They're being bought out by Berkeley, I believe, and she's nervous. And that's something that never happened in the past. But these children are now going to have to be concerned about issues. Will my college that I want to go to still exist in two years?
But I guess I'm wondering.
We need younger people to be involved in that narrative.
I guess what I'm wondering is, is why is it important to be a school board member in order to have that dialogue with kids versus, you know, what would your experience, how would your experiences and your background help inform the school board for changing policy there in some way? I guess what would you bring or focus on doing on the school board level?
It would be someone who can vote for those issues is a big part of it, and someone who's going to be there at every meeting to talk about it. As you know, because we do have students who are there, but we don't have many ex-students. Because Nathaniel Shu, the current student representative, he's a senior. He, you know, he knows a lot about what's going on with COVID, but he doesn't know what it's like to be at PSU or another university after, you know, high school. And the other youth who are activists, a lot of them don't have that experience, and I could bring that in. And the same thing like when you want African-American or another minority group's representation on the board. It's so they have an active voice, they're present for every meeting.
Great, thank you. Herman, can you talk a little bit about why you decided to run for school board now?
Yeah, absolutely. If I had to put it all into something, if this pandemic has taught us anything at all, right? And I've said this before, I try to put it everywhere I go. If the pandemic has taught us anything, is that our school system, the value that it has extends way beyond like the curriculum and the, and the classroom. I mean, the, the schools are literally like, you know, they're like the heart of the community, and, but they're also the, they're like the truest test of what we really believe in and what we value. Every decision that we make in the schools, I mean, from, from the budget that we spend to the allocations, to the, to the policies that review, to the vendor contracts that we have, to the, to just how we, how we're prioritizing things that we do with our custodial staff, with our teachers. Every decision that we make within our school reflects our, in my opinion, how our kids, whether or not they're really a priority or not. And every one of those decisions have a real lasting, lasting impact. And we have to start looking at where we're putting money at. We have to start looking at the way that we're testing our kids. We have to start looking at, you know, what we're really saying is a priority, what really means something to us, and, and why we're doing what we're doing. And we have to keep the, the most marginalized communities, the minority communities. We, we have to keep those communities who have been, who haven't been getting a fair shake at the stick. We have to keep them at the forefront of every conversation that we have. And so I'm running for the, this seat on the board, because I want to make sure that every student is represented. I want to make sure that the, from the custodial staff to the nutrition services, I want to make sure that their voices are being heard, because the working families, they, they make up, they make up this society. And so running for the school board is the place to say, how do I value the line where, where we're, we're putting our dollars and what we're talking about? And are we going to be a people that we just want to be a nation where we talk about stuff as important in word, but we don't do it indeed? Or are we going to sit down, start applying the brass tacks that says, no, this is important, and we're not going to leave this issue until we do something that shows that we believe that this is important? So we're going to ensure that every child, regardless of their zip code, has an opportunity to, to get the best educational platform opportunity that they can have, regardless of where they live, regardless of how they identify. We're going to make sure that we look at the, the dollars, where we're placing our energy, and we're going to make sure that we make decisions based on them first, not, not what we believe, right? I'm not running for this because I want to put my opinion out there. I'm not running for this because I want people to know what I think. I'm running for this because the community needs me to stand up and make sure that their voice is heard. The community, the teachers, the staff, they need, they need somebody to stand up that they know when they go in to talk, we're going to be talking about their issues and not my own. And we're going to make sure that their issues get heard. And we, and we got to be prepared to not just say, okay, we're going to try something, you know, we're going to try this. No, we're going to throw whatever we started, we're going to throw that whole thing out. We're going to start all over from the ground up, and we're going to rebuild something that has the marginalized, the minority, the BIPOC community in mind, because that was, that's what we said is important. And so my job is going to make sure that we look at the policy, them procedures that we have in place, the budget that we have in place, and make sure we're doing indeed what we said we want to do in words, so.
Great, thank you. I want to move on to something that is, you know, not a surprise, but just to focus a little bit in on the return to in-person instruction and kind of get a sense of what all of you think about the district's plans. And if you were a board member, how you might have influenced or what you would have sought to change it? And, let's see, Brooklyn, did you go first? You haven't gone.
No, I've yet to go first.
Okay, how about if you take this one, then, you know, elementary schools are returning or have returned this week. Middle and high schools, schools will be returning in the week of April 19. What's your view on the plan that the district has adopted? And, and whether it's sufficient or, you know, and just what is your read on that plan?
I believe that we should not try to go back to normal, because I think we all know at this point that normal was not good enough. We got to improve upon the old system, and we got to change things.
Okay, hold on. I guess what I want to know is specifically about the, the current plan.
About the current plan?
Right, about just, you know, kind of the hybrid plan.
Are you talking about, so hybrid and how they discuss issues such as three feet or six feet is correct?
Exactly, and just, you know, the, you know, how elementary students, for instance, are in, if I'm remembering this correctly, four days a week for half a day. Middle school and high school students have two days a week of about two and a half hours each day. Just kind of about this plan, is this, you know, is this something you would have voted for? Is this something that you think is too aggressive, not aggressive enough?
No, I would never have gone with a hybrid class. I've been in hybrid classes. They don't work. They are unfunctional. The teachers don't get enough training. I was in a hybrid class at PSU. They are impractical, and anyone who's ever experienced one would never have voted to have that. I believe we should have stuck to online until the end of the year, and then next, for next school year, truly made a more functional in-person format, not even considering such things as three feet apart. I believe that was cruel to even think about doing that to the children as a way to cram more of them into a building. I'm also concerned about the Chromebooks and hotspots they handed out. So at the beginning of COVID, they handed out Chromebooks and hotspots to many of the children in need, this way to help them with online education. My brother was one of the kids who received that. They will be returning those to PPS at the end of the year. My concern is, with the modern form of education, regardless of what job you're going to get in the workforce, you're going to need to know how to use the internet. And all the assignments are now digitalized. They all need D2L. When I was a kid, you still were writing on a notebook, and I imagine for everyone else here, it was the same story. My concern is, if we take these Chromebooks and hotspots away from the children, it will deny them access to education. And I believe we need to keep the Chromebooks and hotspots in the hands of the children, even if it costs us money, because that's important. Those, access to the internet is how these children will learn, especially in our modern age. And we have to also understand that having some kids in the classroom and some kids online is not a functioning way of educating. It might sound smart, you know, when you're sitting in the office discussing things, but when you're in the classroom, you'll see that it just doesn't happen. It doesn't work.
Thank you. Herman, can you go next in terms of what's, you know, what do you think of the in-person instruction/hybrid plan that the district has?
Well, Helen, see, first, I'm gonna say right out the gate, I'm not a very political person. And y'all asking all these, these questions, and I think y'all doing this because y'all know, y'all gonna get a solid answer from me. So I'm gonna give it to you. I'm gonna give you a 15-second soundbite that you're looking for. And I'm gonna tell you, it's probably one of the biggest mistakes, one of the biggest mistakes this district has ever made. Sending kids back before we're, we're really solid on where everything is landing, saying that we're gonna go three feet instead of six feet, when everywhere else is still six feet away. I'm just not.
Portland Public Schools is sticking with six feet. It's the Centers.
They are sticking with it.
It's the Centers for Disease Control that says three feet is fine.
We, we're not sure, there are some schools right now that aren't even sure if all the windows open up all the way so that we can get proper ventilation in the schools. Why are we going, why are we rushing to go back right now? I believe that our going back to school is more politics than it is for the, the safety and the well-being of the kids. I believe that people are tired of, of being at home. They're, they're tired of, you know, not being able to send their kids out, and, and they want, they want to get back to what, what, what normal is. And, and they're trying to like, we need to get this thing moving, and so we're in a rush to, we're in a rush to get this, gets back. And this is a mistake. We're, we do not have right now, we don't have enough custodians in our buildings. We've done an amazing job building a lot of our buildings, making them larger and making them prettier and, and making more stuff available to them. And yet, we don't have enough custodial staff to, to clean those same buildings and to keep those buildings disinfected and, and free. So now, we're talking about, we want to go in and we want to get contracts with different ones who are going to come in, and they're going to be contracted to, to clean certain spaces, but they're not going to be the typical custodial staff. They're going to literally be there for no other purpose but to be disinfecting. Well, how are we going to hold those people accountable, because they're going to be in the spaces with our kids? They're going, what are they gonna, they have, they have a run-in, they say something, there's a harassment. How do we deal with that? What is, what does that look like? What are we doing when it, when it comes to, so they're going to be coming in class for two hours or two and a half hours, or there's some are four hours, these four and a half days or whatever. But yet, some people are still electing to, to stay at home. And so now this teacher, this teacher is still responsible to do both online learning for the people that are choosing to, to be online, as well as in-person learning for those that want to come in. And who's come, who's going to be coming in after every one of her classes to make sure that all the desks and everything that was used was wiped down? Is she now responsible for that, or he now responsible for that? Who's going to follow these kids when they decide they have to go to the bathroom? Because trust me, they're going to have to go to the bathroom. And a lot of the kids are going to see this as a time for me to see my friends who I haven't seen. Who's going to be following behind those kids to make sure that the areas that they went, that they kept their masks on, that they, they wipe down everything that they were, you know, that they put their hands on? Who's going to be following those kids? It's not a problem to simply say, we need to open up the schools. It's when you start letting all these other potential people into the school that we increase our chances for continuing, continuing the, the spread of the virus. And we just opened up the schools, and y'all may know this better than I do, but there was some reporting that showed that a school over on the west side, I believe they've been open for, they were open for a couple of days and already had cases of COVID-19. So then they had to send out a letter to say that, hey, we got the virus in the school, but it's going to be okay. If we haven't contacted you directly, you can, then that means your cohort is okay, and you can still continue to send your kids to school. Why would I want to risk that? So personally, my personal opinion is that this is a mistake. We need to take the time to make sure that we have every precaution in place, that we have enough staff, that we have enough support systems, that we have all these things in place to keep our kids and our teachers safe before we start coming back to school. And then we need to get ready for a solid, safe year on, on next year. But right now, we need to be focusing on, on keeping our kids and our staff and our workers safe versus, we just need to go back to school because I'm tired of being out.
And that's how you view it, as that's what's motivating the, the push to reopen, that people are.
I think that, I personally, again, I'm not a political person, but I believe that the, the rush to go back to school is not taking the safety of the student, it's not taking the safety of the, the staff, it's not taking the safety of the, of the workers in the building, it's not making that the, the priority. I don't think they're making the safety the priority. Something else is driving it, and it's not the safety and well-being of our kids.
Thank you. Margot, how about you? What's your view about the plan to return to in-person instruction?
Yeah, I would agree a lot with what Herman has said. And I read the 105-page proposed administrative rules, and it is insane what the teachers would have to do. Herman is exactly right. I mean, it is, it would be impossible. There'd be no teaching going on. There would just be this. I can't even imagine. And what I told the teachers' union, my concern about the safety of the kids has to do with the Portland Public School Building was attacked. Vehicles were destroyed, fires were set. And from my look, and I'm an investigator by my many professions and trade, is that, to me, that was a warning shot right across the bow of public schools, that if they open, those buildings are wide open. And, and the rules that Kate Brown wants to bring in include parents not being able to go into the school buildings, but the teachers' union can go into the school buildings. And so there is a huge, bigger issue here that I look at, and I know the history of public education. I've studied that. I have yet to find one teacher who knows the history of their own profession. And I think the public schools are, it started in 1854. Democratic Congress started the public schools and the NEA. And there's a lot of history around what was going on at that time in our country in the 1830s, 1840s, 1850s. And I think institutional racism came out of that. So Brown versus the Board of Education, it was Brown versus the public schools. So I think we have so much that is bubbling up that we don't even see. And I think Scott Adams, who does the Dilbert, he's the persuasion guy, and, and he's written many books, and he's been looking at this, and he, he says that the biggest story that the media is not. And he, he says that the biggest story that the media is not watching is that the public school system is crashing. And I say, let it crash, let it come back. Brooklyn has some good ideas. Let it come back so that it's competitive. So before 1854, there was public, there was private. There was not this compulsory, you're gonna go to jail if you don't have your kids in school. So I think, uh, we're, we're focusing on this narrow thing. And as far as an emergency, um, and when Kate Brown did this in March of 2020, I nearly got in my car for three weeks. I went around to all the emergency rooms, the urgent care, the test site, and there was nothing going on. There was no emergency process. And I happened to have to go to my doctor at that time and I was the only one there. And I, and I asked the person.
Margot, I'm sorry, I'd really like to keep this focused on kind of, we don't have a lot of time. So I'd like to keep this focused on. Um, it sounds like you, you do not support going back to in-person instruction. Uh, is that correct?
Well, what I'm saying is there, there has never been an emergency. No child has died in Portland from this, uh, 99.9% recovery rate virus. Yes, there can be some, a virus, but no child has died. And, and children are, are not, uh, at risk. And I, when I talked to the teachers' union, it sounded like they were more concerned about themselves being at risk. And, and we're, we're gonna traumatize these children, masking them up? That's trauma. I, I have, uh, friends who are involved with children right now. And that more children are on antidepressants. They are traumatized. And, and you're gonna go put them in a school building where you're going to segregate them in their little cubicles with masks on? It's, we can't do it. We can't do it, but we can rebuild the public schools so that they are competitive with the other options that are out there now. So.
So, and just so I, I'm, I understand, I, I see the, the sign, uh, that says no masks on children. I don't quite see what the other one says.
Uh, this one over here?
Right.
Uh, public schools hiding sex abuse of students.
Okay.
And that goes for the Oregonian too, I have to say. You had the sex abuse of Elizabeth Lynn Dunham. And the public schools are hiding sex abuse of kids. And so I really just wanted to open up and it, the schools just need to be totally transparent. And they're hiding records. You try to get, uh, public records, I mean, the, the person who's working that on that on the Oregonian. I, I helped the Columbia newspaper one year. It, it, it took them almost, uh, I think three months to get records. And I know how the government hides records. I was a public records coordinator, that was one of my jobs. So there's just this whole secrecy that is in all of our governmental agencies. And the public schools are, are government, you know? Let's, let's go back to choice. And we can, we can build a good public school system. It'll start smaller than we have choice.
Um, a couple of things I, I do want to follow up on fairly quickly. So your, your opposition to masks on children is because, um, you feel it's traumatizing or you feel like it's unnecessary?
Yeah, there, no child has died from this. And over, and it's gonna be a year and a half, no child has died. And you, you're asking of children, in child development, children need to see faces. They need to, that, you know, you, you're putting, making a whole society that, that doesn't have a face.
So I'm.
Need that.
When you say no child has died, um, you're talking about just Portland, correct?
Yeah, I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking about Portland. Yeah. Uh, it's been almost a year and a half.
Yeah, okay.
And, and, and we're acting like the children are, are, you know, are a threat to the teachers. That's what I got when I, um, was talking to the teachers' union. There was hardly any concern spoken about children and the trauma, you know, being traumatized. And now you're gonna have school buildings open, you've got all this violence that's happened in Portland for over a year. I mean, and, and, and they're, they're, they attacked to block business. You know, I mean, it's gotta stop. I mean, it just has to stop.
Okay.
We got, we gotta protect these kids and we've got to nurture these kids. We can't have them traumatized.
All right, I'd like to move on a little bit.
Okay.
And let's start, uh, I think with Herman. Um, what do you expect for the fall? Do you, uh, at this point, do you support full return to in-person instruction this fall?
Uh, Helen, let me make sure I'm understanding you. When you're referring to this fall, you are referring to next Sept, well, this September.
Correct.
Well, actually, we're in Portland, so school actually starts the last week of August now. Which is terrible because I need that extra week. But, yeah, so I believe that we need to reevaluate. Like, I really think we need to take a look at where we're at um, prior to just opening up. I think it, it would be safe to say, okay, we want to have a plan, um, to open up, to fully open up in the fall. Um, but in that, that would just be one part of a plan. I think with that, we would also want to start looking at, um, start going to our, our unions, start going to like the, I'm, I'm really harping and saying about the custodial union because we need to clean it, but I think we need to see a 30% at least, at least a 30% increase in our custodial staff before we start saying that, okay, we've got, you know, we're ready to go back. Let's start making sure that we've got enough custodial staff to keep our buildings clean. Let's make sure, um, that we have enough, um, nutrition services workers and we have different things in place so that the nutrition services workers, they have the, um, the safeties.
Excuse me, Herman? Excuse me. Margot, could you remove the sign? It's very distracting when someone else is speaking.
Oh, well, since it says Cheryl, I thought I better put my name up there.
It's okay, it's distracting. Sorry, go ahead, Herman.
Can you put my name up there?
Um, but I, I, I think we need to really, we really need to look at, instead of just saying, we're going to open up on this day. The plan should be, we're going to open up when we, when we see this in place, we got, we know that we can keep the buildings clean. We're gonna open up when we know that we have, um, enough disinfectant or we're going to have a plan to, to keep the classrooms clean. We're going to open up when we've got a man, um, a plan to manage, um, what the teachers are gonna do in between classes. We're gonna open up when we've got a plan to, to manage how we're going to interact or manage the interaction of kids in the hallways. We're, it shouldn't just simply be, we're going to open up on this date. Because then the priority becomes the date of opening versus we're going to list out the different things that we need to have in place prior to being able to open safely for all students. And then when we have those things in place, then we're going to open up. That changes how we look at things and that changes the priority. So now the priority is no longer September. Because right now, if, if, if we just said we're gonna open in the fall, then we're just rushing to get to Sep- September. If we change the goalpost to say, we're going to open up when we have the things in place to keep our students safe, to keep our staff safe, to keep our teachers safe, to keep our buildings safe. Now we've got a different thing to do and it's not based on, uh, a time factor. It's based on, uh, a metrics of what are the metrics needed to keep people safe?
So what are they for you? So in terms of, for instance, you've got, um, there's, uh, the general public in Oregon can start, um, uh, receiving or at least, um, making appointments for the vaccine starting April 19th. Um, what, what are the specific metrics that you need to see in place before opening for full in-person instruction?
So I, I guess, again, I would be looking at, one, I, I do believe in, um, the, I haven't gotten a vaccination yet, but I believe in the science and I believe in the, the importance of the vaccination, of keeping us all safe. And I, I do believe that all of those who, um, at most risk, the highest risk and can get it, should get it. And so, um, I, I do believe that we should be at a place where we could, um, we could reach that herd immunization. But I don't think that that has to be the only defining factor to say that we can come back to school. Because we don't know what, um, medical issues someone else might have to keep them from getting the, um, the vaccination. So I want to keep that in mind. So that shouldn't be the only factor. But that should be, that should be one. Are we closer to that, that herd immunization number or, or not? We should be looking at, do we have the things in place to keep the school clean, disinfected? So that we can, we can know that, you know, this ventilation is good. Is, have we made sure that the ventilation in all of the school buildings, not just the newer school buildings, but some of the older school buildings that kids are gonna be going back to? That they have, um, clean, clear ventilation systems that are going to be able to process air? That we can open up windows where we need to open up windows? Do we have that in place? There's, we need to start looking at those types of, of metrics. Um, what all of those things?
Right. And my understanding is that the ventilation issue has been, I mean, the district has said that every classroom is going to be evaluated for ventilation. They've ordered, uh, or are receiving, uh, filtration systems, et cetera, or filters that, um, to meet that.
Right, but they also have a, a report that says, um, that the, the schools are considered moderately clean. And so when you start looking at moderately clean, I put it this way. Again, I'm not a politician and so, yeah, I, I use analogies. I, I use a lot of analogies. If you're going, if you're gonna, if you're sick, right? And, and you gotta have open heart surgery where they're gonna be opening you up? Do you want the, if you got to choose, if you had a choice of choosing, do you want the doctor who got a C minus? Or do you want the one who got an A plus plus? If I get to choose what doctor I'm gonna get, I want the doctor who's got the, the A plus plus. It's not that the other doctor isn't qualified. It's just, I feel like this doctor with his specialty might be a little bit more qualified. Moderately dirty or moderately clean might work in some spaces. But when I'm putting my child's life on the line, when I, I'm putting my child's safety on the line, I, I'm putting their, their, like, this is my future. This is my tomorrow. When I'm putting that on the line, do I want to put that on the line for the C minus, the moderately clean? Or do I, if I get a choice, do I want to make sure that it's the one with the A plus plus? I think we would all say, I want the one with the A plus plus. Why are we settling for moderately clean? Instead of putting the things in place to get us above that? I don't feel like we should settle. I feel like we should not say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna go with this because, you know, it's, it's not trashed, there's not trash on the ground. We're, we're settling. And I, I don't feel like we should be settling when it comes to the safety and the well-being of our kids and our, and our, our working families. I don't think we should settle. If we can make a choice, I feel like we need to make the best choice. And with that, it, it's a tough one. It's a tough one. But I, I feel like we should, we should make it.
Can I follow up on that, Herman? I'm just, I'm Laura Gunderson, I'm sorry I came in late to the meeting. But I'm just curious then, if, if we're going to meet these metrics, uh, that I think from your previous answer that you, you felt that maybe we wouldn't have come back at all this school year? And again, if these metrics you apply for buildings to open up in the fall of next year of 21, 22, do you feel that the district is provide, providing though in the meantime, uh, adequate educational and socially developmental, like, correct, uh, services to all students in Portland? Are they doing a good enough job if they don't come back to provide equal education and other services for all students in Portland?
All right, that's a completely, um, different question. But I'm a, I'm a give it a stab nonetheless. I feel like there were, there were already students within our school system who were, who were struggling. COVID-19 and the, and the, and the pandemic and the separation from school made that disparity even worse. I feel like as a school district, we're, we may be trying, um, to, we're maybe trying to meet the needs of all the students. But without that ability to, to really be with the student, without that ability to, you know, to, there are a lot of kids, you know, this, this is a catch point too, because there were a lot of kids who were, you know, avoiding abuse at home because they were able to come to school. I, I think we, we know that. There were a lot of, there are a lot of families who, you know, they, school was what they needed to, to be able to, to be able to move forward. And they're not getting that, they're not getting that at home. And so you're, you're in this paradigm because the district can only do so much. They're a school system. And their, their job is to try to educate, but they can only educate the ones that have the ability to show up to the platforms and the mediums that they're, that they have available to them. And so are all the kids being, are all the kids getting the same advancement? Are, are they all learning equally? I think the, the short answer to that is no. They're not. Because not everybody is able to take advantage of all the different, the different resources that, that are available to them. Not everybody has all the same support systems behind them to, to keep them going throughout a day. Um, this, so the, the short answer is not, is that they're not. But the longer answer is that the question that you're asking is a much more in-depth question that goes beyond simply the school system and what the school system is providing. What the school system made available to, uh, a lot of families were a lot of the additional resources that came with the student being in school. It came, the, the, the resource of having the, the community clothes closet, the resource of having the, the food bank, the, the resource of having the, the nutrition services, the resource of having the, the sun programs in school, the resource of having the, the mentors in, in school. The, the school building was a place where you could put a lot of the, the social service needs that a family needs in one space. And so because kids are not able to re- return to in, in-person learning, they're missing out on a lot of those big, big ticket items that were helping them to get through, get through the day. So the short answer is no, not, not all kids are benefiting from the same. But the, the real answer is that that is a much more complex situation than just simply saying, are they not getting it? Is the, the district not providing it? The district can't provide it. Because how do, how does the district navigate all those other pieces? And so I just feel like, I, I appreciate Ms. Laura, your, your question. But what that really should be is it should open us up to a much, a much deeper dialogue around how do we ensure that all the students that we're serving, regardless of their exit code, are now getting the, the resources that they had prior to, um, the, the pandemic? If that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Margot, can you, um, please answer the question about, uh, what your expectations would be for fall in-person instruction?
Um, this, well, I think I've already answered it. The school should, should be open, totally. No masking, no distancing. Uh, you're gonna have to have a plan for the kids who have been traumatized out of all of this. And, uh, right now, what's happening is just gonna provide further, um, traumatization to the kids and the teachers as well. I, I just can't imagine. Um, and my take has been that the teachers aren't so afraid of COVID as they are of all the other things that, uh, are happening now, all the violence that has happened in Portland. Uh, that is a bigger concern. These buildings are wide open. And you've got kids who for, for a year now have been on the streets participating in violence. And if they haven't been, there's other kids who've been home watching the violence. Uh, there is certainly is an anti-authority, um, dynamic that is happening in Portland for now over a year. And you're gonna have some of those kids come back into the school. And, you know, the school teachers, uh, and this is the reason that, um, the schools were, uh, started in 1854 was to make obedient submissive citizens out of us. And it's also the reason that they, they were to dumb us down so that we hate reading. I mean, the way that they teach reading in school, kids end up hating reading. I have a personal experience with my, with my oldest grandson. I helped him learn to read when his teacher couldn't do it. So it's a much bigger issue and you, and we just keep narrowing down to, uh, this, uh, pandemic thing. And, and it's, there's not a, there's no emergency. Uh, people, everything needs to open up. And this is just destroying so many people's lives. But on the other hand, like I said, the biggest story that's gonna come out of this year is the, But on the other hand, like I said, the biggest story that's gonna come out of this year is the, the destruction of the public school system. There is more homeschooling. It's like increased twenty-five percent in some states. There, there's educational pods. I talked to one father. He's spending two thousand dollars a month to educate his child now. So I think for the parents that, uh, you know, didn't have one parent that could, who could stay home to do the homeschooling, I think those parents should keep track of how much they've spent, how much time they have spent. And I think that, uh, dollars now need to follow the student and not the, the school districts. It just, you know, open up, go back to competition. I mean, you can re- redo the schools and there's a, I'm sure there's a lot of, uh, ideas here from Brooklyn and from, uh, Herman. You know, he, he's done a lot of great stuff. I, I looked at his Facebook page. You know, he's done a lot of great stuff, the, with the schools and, uh, and, uh, yeah, and, and Brooklyn's right. We, we don't listen to the kids, you know? Uh, we've got, we've got the kids in there because we're trying to make them, it's like a prison. I mean, when I, when I subbed, I was like, oh my gosh, parents do not know what goes on in the schools once those doors close. I've seen kids traumatized. I've seen the emotional ah, uh, environment, you know, and I've seen teachers be stressed, you know, and that. I worked, uh, lunch and recess duties. You know, there, there were adults who had no idea how to manage a group of kids. There, you know, there was, uh, rumors that a kid's gonna get attacked on the playground. You know, so I'm trying to manage all this stuff that's happening. Kids are getting hurt. Uh, there's all kinds of, uh, conflict between counselors and nurses and principals. I, I, I've seen it play out. I've been in the teacher's lounge when the teachers are dissing the parents. You know, and they're dissing, and they're making fun of kids. There is a whole thing that has been built up now for a hundred years. Brown versus the Board of Education. It was Brown, it was a lawsuit against public schools, not private schools.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I, I go why? Cause I have just so much historical information and I just, you know, go to my Facebook page and I'll be posting stuff on there. And I wasn't trying to do anything except it says Cheryl, so I wanted to be sure that my name is there.
Got it. And you know what? I think it's fine. The recording will be fine because it's actually just all the other participants are just a strip. So they won't, it, it, I don't think it'll be confusing to people.
My name will be on there?
Well, no, but I think it won't be confusing because-
Okay. I'm Margot.
Um, Brooklyn, um, if you can talk a little bit about, uh, just, you know, what you foresee for fall, what you would want to see in terms of instruction?
Um, there's been a lot talked about already. I, I guess where I'll begin is, I, I'm not a medical expert. I, I have no clue what's gonna happen with COVID nineteen by the fall. Ho- hopefully in, in a dream world, everything will be over and, and all the COVID will be gone. But, but I, I, I don't know. I'm not a medical expert. I, I'm a business student. I have no clue how that's gonna handle virus-wise. Wh- what I do know is, so in PPS, Green talked about sun school in particular is one thing he mentioned. Is sun school is leaving Portland Public Schools also because they're county ran. They're going to other school districts in our county. And, and so we're losing a lot of our after-school activities as well. And we're gonna continue losing them. And after COVID nineteen, the pandemic as a whole, a lot of private entities that would do after-school activities for the children are going out of business. So we need to increase after-school activities. It's because the county's not gonna help us. A- and these private companies are no longer there to help us. So we need to make up for that as well. And understand that we're losing sun schools in our district just because the county only has so much money. They, they're gonna go to the poorest communities and we're just currently not that. A- as well, we have to also remember the trauma. Uh, I, in my junior year of high school, I, I was in a PCC class and said Jefferson, they allow you to take those. And, and there was an active school shooter outside of my classroom once. And when the shooter, um, was done shooting, luckily no one was injured in, in, in the incident. They, they told us we had to just sit there and go right back to class. I'll tell you, for that next half hour of class, the only thing I was watching was the clock. I didn't know any, I wasn't paying attention at all. And yes, here in PPS, luckily none of our kids have been injured and, or gotten, you know, died of COVID. But they're still gonna be traumatized. They're still gonna be scared. They're still gonna be sitting there watching the clock like I was. And we gotta understand that. And, and we gotta make sure that whatever we do, that they're not sitting there watching the clock, that they're, they're learning. And we, we, again, we, we also have to think about the janitorial union as Green was talking about as well. We're currently union busting. That, that's what's going on. And we, we like to, we like to teach our kids about unions. I know, especially talking about how Amazon, how poorly they treat their staff. And if we want to teach the kids this narrative, then why are we being so cruel to the janitorial union? We're union busting. We're getting private contractors to come in and, and do, and handle COVID. We could hire more of them. We could wait, hire more. We could work with them and expand and give them, you know, COVID pay. They worked hard. Many of them were given fewer hours. I would talk to one individual, he mentioned that he drove here an hour to get to work. Worked only for an hour because they only gave him an hour and then had to drive another hour to get back home. That's them actively trying to convince him to leave our school district. That's cruel and unjust. And we need to make sure that we're not doing that to our janitorial staff. And we gotta, if we're gonna ta- preach to our children that unions are good and, and that we should treat our workers fairly, then we need to actually act upon it.
Thank you. Um, uh, I think we probably have time for really only, and this, I want to hit this question as quickly as possible. Um, so we'll probably go over a little bit, um, at this point. Uh, but it is a really important question. I'm hoping each of you can just kind of, um, uh, talk about briefly. Um, and I guess we will start with, um, Margot on this. Um, you know, just the past year has shown us, uh, just, uh, or we've seen over the past year, a, a community-wide understanding of the need to change um, our institutions, some of our practices, um, that contribute to systemic racism. I guess I'm wondering what specific changes are, are you seeking or would you seek to help fulfill that at PPS? You know, I, I guess kind of, you, you've talked actually quite a bit about that. So maybe for you, it's more specific. Um, it's interesting because you were saying that, you know, something along the lines of, you know, let the system burn down and yet you're-
I didn't say burn.
Or crash down or-
Yeah.
But no. And then so, but, so as, but you're seeking to be a member of the board that oversees its, um, uh, just its success. So I guess square those two.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. That is a great ending question. So, uh, we are not teaching, uh, black history in our schools. Uh, one year I, uh, at the beginning of February, I subbed at Arada Creek. And they had me do the school bulletin board. I'm like, great, you know? So I put up Malcolm Little. I put up Cassius Clay. Uh, I, I put up, uh, Claudette Calvin. Uh, I put up the kids at the lunch counter. And of course, um, Martin Luther King and, and Rosa Parks. As I was putting that up, uh, a school employee came by and looked at me and went, you know, it's hard enough controlling these kids and you put that up there? I was like, whoa, you know? So at the end of the, uh, February, I got another, uh, sub job at that school. They took down Malcolm Little, Malcolm X, Cassius Clay, Muhammad Ali, uh, Claudette Calvin and the kids at the lunch counter. Well, Claudette Calvin, it was the kids. It was the black kids who started the modern, um, civil rights movement. It was black girls, fifteen-year-old girls who were saying no on the bus. And when they hauled Claudette Calvin off the bus, she was, uh, she's also pregnant. She was schooled the police officers about the Constitution and the Bill of Rights. I mean, she, no holds barred. So what happened was, and you can read Branch Taylor, Taylor Branch, America and the King years. Um, they just weren't comfortable with Claudette. She was darker skinned. So Rosa Parks actually was, uh, the one who went on the school bus. She was more middle-class. She was lighter-skinned. She was part of the system. So, uh,
Keep this focused, focused on just, you know, but, right, you're talking about-
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying that the schools are not, uh, teaching, uh, black history. And so Claudette Calvin and the other girls, their cases went to the United States Supreme Court, not Rosa Parks. So I'm just giving you a very concrete example of racism in the public schools. So, uh, we're not teaching the, the accurate history. And, um, and like I said, the Brown versus the Board of Education, it was directed at public schools. So there is an institutional racism going on in the schools, all the public schools. And that's what I'm saying. And I can help with that. I mean, I, I love history. I, I have been connected to all kinds of, uh, diverse communities in my life. And I can help the public schools go to the original intent of, of how things unfolded. Oh, here's a good history. Portland Public Schools, they were integrated in eighteen seventy-two. Eighteen seventy-two. Eighteen sixty-eight, there was only about five hundred black families. Uh, a father shoemaker, he brought a suit against, uh, the, the schools. And then by eighteen seventy-two with the Fourteenth Amendment, all men of all colors voted to integrate the Portland Public Schools. So, but we don't know that history. We have some actually good history. And, and, and I'm tired of the, the media, uh, showing black people like they're victims. And we got videos out there of people thinking that, that blacks don't know how to get a driver's license, to get ID or how to use a computer. I mean, that's where this has gone. And it's coming from the white culture. Uh, and it's coming from the media who controls the narrative. I mean, the, the black culture is, is so rich. They have such strength. They have such class. You, you, you have, you know, businessmen and businesswomen in the history of the whole country after the Civil War. Billionaires was a black woman. So-
Okay, thank you.
I can help with that. I'm sure Herman can help with it. And Brooklyn too.
Uh, Brooklyn, I think you're next. Um, the same question, just, you know, in the past year, we've seen this community-wide recognition of that fundamentally institutions and practices need to change. What would you do if on the school board, uh, to help, um, to help make that change at PPS?
Uh, I'm hearing a lot of discussion about how to expand African-American history. But I'm, I'm getting concerned about Latino history, about Asian-American history. I, I believe those are not being discussed enough a- as well. And I, I, I personally, in my high school experience, they taught us about the Brown versus the Board of Education. We, we watched movies about Malcolm X. Um, those were talked about in, in my school experience. I can't speak for every school in the district. But I, I know for, but we didn't talk about Latino history. We didn't talk about gentrification towards the Japanese community here in Portland. Like historically, um, Chinatown here in Portland used to be, um, Little Tokyo. They re-change, they changed the name when they moved all the Japanese Americans out of Portland. Those were things that were not taught to me though in, in school.
Yeah.
And I feel oftentimes when they do talk about minority history, it's always on the federal level. It's never on the local level. And oftentimes we don't even talk about the local level at all. And, and as well, a lot of times they repeat the history. Like for example, when I was in school, we read Howard Zinn every year. Uh, you don't need to read Howard Zinn four times in a row. I'll tell you that much. You, you read it once, you, you get the information. And, and I think it is a sign that we really do need to think about how do we teach history? Are the history teachers communicating with each other? So each year expands on what was taught last year? And are we actually educating the kids about all their issues? Cause I felt like when I was in school, they never talked about my history too. You know, my, my father is Jewish. My mom moved to the States from Canada. And I felt like the only time I ever personally heard my own history, and when I was in PPS, was they one time did a unit for a week on the Seven Day War. And that's the only time I personally felt like I heard my own history. And I think it, it's not just African-Americans that are getting the short end of the stick here. It's everyone. And we need to also not just do federal history. It needs to be local, state and county.
Great, thank you. And Herman, uh, same question for you. Uh, I guess what would you do as a member of the school board to kind of help address changes in institutions or policies that you think need to be, um, amended? Sorry, Herman?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Alright. I believe as a, um, as a district, we do a, a great dra- a great job throwing money at stuff. Um, what I'd like to see us do, um, a better job is, um, that is making sure we're throwing money at the right stuff and the stuff that's really important to us. If we want to start looking at, um, systemic racism and how it's working out within our schools, then we have to start asking ourselves the, the question of how are we uplifting? And how are we supporting? And how are we building up the, the BIPOC community that's, that's already there? How are we, um, making sure that, what are we doing to make sure that their voice is being heard? What do we make, what are we doing to, or where are we allocating our dollars? Where are we allocating our contracts? Where, where are we showing that we want to, we want to end this issue that we believe to be true? Um, I, I've said it before, I'll say it again. You want to know what's important to somebody? Show me, um, show me your bank account and where you spend your time. And I'll show you, I'll show you what's important to you. If we wanna, if we truly want to do something about the systemic racism that we're seeing within our so- our school system, then let's uncover the, the budget. Let's look at the budget. Let's be transparent with the budget. Let's be honest about where we're at. And then be honest about what it's going to take to get us where we need to go. Understanding that it's not, it's not going to change overnight, but we can make gradual changes that will get us there in time. Let's start looking at how we're spending our dollars, who we're working with, how we're supporting. Do the, um, BIPOC teachers and staff that we have now, how are we valuing them? How are we letting them know that, that they're important, that their voice is necessary? And that we, we want more of what they have, what they offer. And then how are we highlighting that? When we start making the changes for the, for the families and the, the community and the staff that we already have now, then we won't have to worry about delivering the message because they'll go out and they'll tell other people about, I know that they care about me there. I know that they lift me up there. I know that they want me to be there. And this is how I know. So we have to start looking at how we're showing that we want to end this. And we can begin. I don't know. I've never ran for a public office. And so I've never sat on a, a school board. And I don't know all the ins and outs of what they currently have in place. But one of the things that I would want to make sure that we do is that we, we look under the hood of that. And we get real honest and transparent with the families and the communities that we're called to serve. And we start making intentional changes by acknowledging where we fall short. And then this is where we're gonna, how we're gonna go forward. And if we do that, then it'll happen. It's going to take time. But it will happen. It's happening now. It's happening now. But we can speed up the rate, I believe.
Great. Well, thank you very much, everyone, for making time to be with us today and for being, uh, so generous with your time. I know we've gone well over the, the hour that I promised. Um, but I really appreciate it. Um, I may have some follow-up questions and we'll, uh, check in with you individually. Um, and if you all can remember to just send me, uh, a headshot and your age, if you haven't done so already, that would be great. But thank you. We'll be in touch. Um, and, uh, I, I appreciate the conversation today. So-
Thanks very much.
Yeah.
Have a good day.